Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
It's been rare when people can't hear me. I'm going to call that to order. We're going to go to committee, commission reports. Counselor Starr, Multicultural Center Intergovernmental Board.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Counselor Sale. Just the things that I think the council and the public would be the most interested in. It's that time of the year for the Multicultural Center Board. Things, the financial reports, the audit is in process. Those governance things that are important as part of the organization, looking at funding. And then, one of the biggest things that's going to be on the agenda for the group is looking at the programming for the fall and winter with their after-school programming and things. So, we have a special meeting tomorrow to discuss exactly what that's going to look like. Transporting students back and forth from schools and back to schools and things. So, I think next month will be a lot more interesting. I think the board will have a chance to make some decisions and really have a look at how they can make an impact on the community and to work with all cultures in our community. So, I'll block out 15, 20 minutes for next time.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's move on to the South Dakota Municipal League Board of Directors. Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. We had our Municipal League Board Meeting in Lake Andes last Wednesday, Thursday. Some of the things that we went over, we discussed our membership for the Municipal League. We have 97% members of the league. Only nine cities not being participants in the Municipal League. And some of those are real, real small populations, less than 2,000 population is not a member of the league. We discussed our annual conference coming up on October 5th, which will be in Spearfish. The other, you'll see some district meeting schedules being updated as well. And then, we talked in length about the legislative session and summer studies from the Marijuana Task Force and the Housing Task Force. Municipal League will have several members out in Rapid City to testify that Yvonne has lined up. And then, we also talked about in detail, one of the things I think is really exciting is that we, as a board, voted. We have a CD coming up, and we voted to pay off our building and so, using some of that bond. That's something that Pauline Sumption out of Rapid City has tried to do for several years. And finally, it was something that the board unanimously supported this last time. The other item that we talked about, which I've briefed you on before, is really making sure that all municipalities have accurate and factual information when it comes to sales tax reporting. Oftentimes, when we annex new properties, there's a reporting mechanism that is done to the state. And if we, as cities, don't report that, we miss out on sales tax. We had about 12,000 addresses that were missing from that database. We've worked closely with the Department of Revenue, the city, and Tom Greco was very instrumental in pulling maps for many different cities throughout South Dakota. Municipal League has put some blurbs in their magazine. They had a speaker at Finance Officer School. And they'll also have another informational at our league meeting. Our conference is in October. Really making sure that all cities are getting that tax that they're legally owed. And so, with the online sales tax just taking place a couple of years ago, that's really where this falls in line. There were several that, large companies that were reporting it, but some of those onesie-twosies companies were missing out. And so, we want to make sure that we have those done correctly. We toured the city of Pixtown as well as Lake Andes and just kind of took a look at their city and some of the things that they have going on there next to the river. And that was really the gist of our agenda. Next meetings will be, like I said, in October, district meetings to follow that later. So, stay tuned for your emails for those.
Thank you. How about the Experience Sioux Falls Bid Board? Councilmember Recky.
Thank you, Counselor Sale. That bid board did meet this morning. And as you know, the entertainment industry has been one of the hardest hit by the COVID crisis. Some good news on the horizon. Note straight here. The bid tax and room tax is increasing nicely. Last year, Sioux Falls actually was number one in its comp set, in its comparable set, at 99%, 59% occupancy, which is low. Normally, they would be expecting 80%, but 59% would be up from the lowest point, when it was riding around 35%. But still, at 59%, we were number one in our comparable set. This year, we are at number seven in May. In May, room occupancy in Rochester was number one. And we were down, you know, so we're kind of being beat out by Rochester. And year-to-date, we're number five in our comp set, again with Rochester leading at 85.2%. The marketing report indicated, an interesting, exciting indicator. And that was that our reviews, or the number of hits we have on our information and websites for this month was the highest for any month since May of 2015. So, that's, you know, gives some promise, some excitement. There was a AAA article in the magazine about Chislic in Sioux Falls. And so, we're becoming the Chislic capital of the world, I think. So, anyway, we'll take that. As they said over there, we'll take any article we can get in a AAA magazine. That's, you know, that's fun to have that happen. Then I would just end with a note that, you know, it's still certainly not out of the woods. The improvement in the convention business is really, is in the leisure, travel, and sports. And that's what's filling the room, you know, and creating the occupancy tax right now. The conventions and the business meetings are lagging way behind. And, you know, that's not sustainable over a long period of time. So, they're hoping, you know, with those hits, that people are starting to get ready to plan into the future. And of course, they're aggressively marketing and continue to go after that business, you know, 18 months, year down the road. But there still is, you know, a lag between that convention business, which is really the bread and butter and that they need in order to be sustainable. But, you know, in keeping our eye on the ball, the important thing is that leisure, travel, and sports is, you know, is floating the boat at the moment, and it is increasing.
Right. Thank you very much. Now, this time, we'll move on to council remarks. Does anybody have councilor remarks? Seeing none, we're going to jump right into our first presentation. Sam On Demand. Come on up, Sam Treblecock, the Senior Planner. Tell us how we move people around the city.
Thank you. So, it's been about six months into our pilot project. So, we wanted to give you a little bit of an update about what's going on, give you some data, what some of the findings are that we've, to this point, and also tell you a little bit about what some of the future plans are for this pilot. Just a little background again to take you kind of back. What is Sam On Demand? It was an innovation pilot project that came out of the Transit Core Team project, as you remember. Running it on Saturdays, possibly moving it forward to weekdays, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. It's run with SAM buses and SAM bus drivers. Pantonium is our software platform that we're working with to provide the actual rides, the scheduling and the dispatch of those rides. Why are we doing the pilot? If you remember, there's transit fund issues. I've kind of pulled up the latest one. You'll see more about this in the budget. But certainly, we're looking to try to find ways how to more efficiently run transit, knowing that we do have some transit fund issues as we look out into the future. A lot of that has to do with, as you remember, capital replacement of our bus system and just overall how we can continue to manage that transit fund. As part of the innovation team, you know, of course, we found it was really important. It was identified as a critical issue to innovate, not to just look at it the same way, to look at it completely differently. And certainly, this pilot is probably the biggest change that Sioux Falls Transit has had in a very long time. Sioux Falls' growth certainly left transit behind. What I mean by that is, you know, we're staying the same, but with growth, you can't provide services outside of that, into that new growth area. So, is this a way that we can do that? Of course, you remember the innovation team. This was a critical component of how we came forward with the SAM On Demand project. And we met really for a year and a half coming up with this project. And this is the implementation of that pilot that came out of that innovation team. That goal of that project, again, the pilot, is to understand how and if mass transit on demand can increase service area and hours, meeting still the operational and economic requirements that we have. Again, keeping in focus with that transit fund. So, I'm going to get in some data, and we just received the most recent data from Pantonium. It's a great deal of information. I'm only kind of scratching the surface of what we were able to see. But that's something we can certainly get out to you in a full report. We've had 24 days, you know, it's every week, it's once a week, but 24 days of services launch. We've had 5,500 trip requests, 4,000 passenger trips. Average ride time is 20 minutes, and average wait time is 11. 75% of trips have been completed earlier on time. Here's kind of the trip requests from the beginning. You'll see that there was a dip there in May. That's because, and we'll talk about this more, and you'll hear me mentioning it every so often, we actually added in two fixed routes across town east and across town west, completely based upon the data that we received, origin and destination data from the project. It's really been, I think, a great part of the project, and we've had really good services and continued to see, especially for people that can't schedule a ride with the phone and things like that, it's been a great addition. Rides, we're getting about 210 to 293 every Saturday through April. Through May and June, we've gotten 131 to 193. But keeping in mind that some of those rides then were on the crosstown routes. So, in total, we've had 226 to 329. Actually, we had the greatest number of rides just this past Saturday, which was at 329. To compare that, the week before we started this, there were 689 boardings that day. You have to do a little bit of math, but to, because of transfers, there's a ratio that you look at, which is at 63%. So, it'd have been about 435 rides that we would have that day. Now, why the lower rides? Number one, what we're finding is that, you know, some people are just not willing to schedule rides. And there's other days that they can ride. So, some of them are going, hey, I don't want to learn this. I'm going to go over here and just ride on Fridays or on Mondays. In a lot of cases, we typically find that on-demand is lower because it's a very specific origin and destination that people are riding to. Some cases, there are probably, in some cases, people are just saying, hey, I'm going to go from here to there and kind of at a snap. So, that's some of it. And then, you know, some of it also, we know that it's new. And we're trying to figure out how to get people, and we're finding that riders are starting to come back, I think. Trip scheduling types, this is throughout the entire time. I'll show you another one that shows it over the months. But this is one of the major findings, is that most people are still scheduling by phone, and that's the dispatch one. So, we're only getting about, in this one, you know, somewhere around 35% that are scheduling by the app, some by the web. So, that's been a challenge for us. And that's part of the reason we brought on the crosstown routes, because we were specifically identifying areas for people that were scheduling by phone or at the window. So, as you can see on this next one, we've been able to reduce that. Now, we have about 50% that are scheduling by phone or at the window. It's with the dispatch staff on Saturdays. So, we are seeing a little bit of improvement in that area, and we continue to work on that. Origin and destination pairs. Now, this is what the ridership is like and where it goes in Sioux Falls on Saturdays. Kind of all over the place. And it's pretty scattered. And that's one of the findings, is that we have really dispersed ridership in the Sioux Falls, at least in Saturday. I could expect otherwise and other, on the weekdays, too. You can see where the strongest is coming out of our depot, and you'll see that also on this next slide. This is where our popular transit stops are at, our pickups and drop-offs. This is before we had the fixed route services. And you can see where our popular stops were, the Bus Depot and Walmart East and Shirley Avenue and Shirley Place, which is Walmart West. And that's essentially what we devised our fixed routes off of, was one going Walmart East and Target, and the other one going Walmart West and probably, you know, very close to the other Target. That's where people are typically going along those corridors. And so, having that kind of data really was exceedingly helpful in this process. Ride times have improved over the times. You can see, we had some rides that were over 45 minutes, where people were on the bus over 45 or even a few over an hour. Well, some of that was because of the ride lengths that we had, this dispersed travel. We had to make some adjustments in our parameters that we did in early May. Also, we started allowing, in the training, allowing the bigger buses to use the interstates for some of the, and that helped in ride times. Wait times, like I said before, 75% of the rides are early and on time. I'll say that is not good enough. That's something we continue to work on. Most of anything that we've probably gotten comments is, in some degree, the amount of time people had to wait. And what it is, it's the 20-minute window that people wait for a ride. When it's outside of that 20-minute window, they're waiting, you know, beyond that. And a lot of times, if they have the app, it works pretty well. It'll update, it'll tell you when it's coming, if it's coming a little later. But if they don't have that app, and it's cold outside or it's raining, it can be an issue. And those are things that we need to continue to work on. And that comes up with the issue I talk about reliability and flexibility. It's very flexible, but not necessarily, do you know when it's coming every single time? One time, it could come right when you schedule a ride. The next time, it could be 20 minutes or even 30 minutes after you schedule it. Journey metrics, this is one thing that we found here more than anything. We have, it says, it's a little less than one rider per, you know, any time that the journey's going. And you'll say, well, how can it be less than one? Well, we have no-shows, which is a challenge. It's something that we like to continue to work on, of course. And you'll have a driver, it'll be scheduled, they'll go there, and no one is there. So, that's why it's less than one. Otherwise, it would be over one, obviously, because we do have some multi. We have some, in some cases, where you'll see more than, obviously, one on a bus. But the other thing on here is that we have a lot of minutes of idle time on the buses, which is something we've really been trying to measure. And you can see how this is also going up, which actually is a good thing. And it's a good thing because we'd like to be able to see that we can expand. If we have idle time, we can use that idle time for other services. And whether or not it be for other rides or for expanding those rides, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, too. As I talked about earlier, these are the fixed routes that we brought forward in May, in early May. You'll see the blue one is going to the west, and the red one is going out to the east side Walmart. After we did this, we saw 30% reduction in the average number of phone calls coming in or dispatch book trips, which was exactly what we had hoped. Because there was a lot of time that the depot staff, the dispatchers there on Saturdays, were taking calls in. And we even had to double up. Even a few weeks, even, we had to triple up. And that's something we want to keep working on. But that's been a huge part of this. No-show rate decreased also. That's something we continue to work on as a part of this. So, here's been kind of the phases. That first phase was kind of our warm-up, which we were just trying to get our feet underneath us in the training. Then in February, we were adjusting settings and procedures. We were really looking at what we could do to improve things. And then, we surveyed riders and drivers. And we certainly got an earful from some of the riders, because this is new and this is different. And they're used to, and a lot of them probably have been riding fixed route for a long time. So, it's really reliable. It comes, even though it might come every hour, they know it comes five after the hour. And this kind of ride, it comes within a 20-minute window whenever you schedule it. So, it's more flexible, but you're going to also have to, you know, wait for it in a lot of cases. And so, that, getting used to that and working through some of those late rides has been something that we've been hearing about. We made some adjustments based on that feedback, as we've been talking about here, including the crosstown east and west routes and some adjustments to the parameters. And we're continuing to make some adjustments as we move forward. Every single week, we find things that we can improve upon. So, the findings overall, again, the changes that we made to the service area and planning parameters have improved service during this pilot, including doing the fixed route, inclusion of the highways, and working with Pantonium support, which, by the way, Pantonium support has been really good. They work with us, and whenever we're calling them, they're calling us back. They work with us all the time and spend a great deal of time with us. So, that's all been really good. Trip requests have been widely distributed, as I said before. So, that's something, we weren't really sure what would happen when we do this. Obviously, something you're hoping for is you get a lot of loading and unloading at specific stops. So, drivers don't have to go to so many different stops and so many crosstown, you know, from one place to the other. But we found it's pretty dispersed. It's very dispersed. And based on that, we do not see that, by any means, as you can already see from what we've done already, that SAM On Demand will be able to just take over the transit system. There's still very much a place for fixed route, especially in those high-density transit areas. Now, on the other side of it, SAM On Demand, we think should be focused more on your low-density areas, the areas that it takes, you're not getting a lot of trips. You might otherwise see, if you're on fixed route, a lot of empty buses. That's where we think SAM On Demand is going to have real strengths. And then, expansion of transit hours and services, we think could be more provided efficiently through SAM On Demand. We're seeing, because of the idle time that I just showed you, that that's certainly an opportunity there. Some of the things that we need to work more on, reliability, those ride wait times. We continue to see improvements that need to be made there. Education and marketing of the rider, getting them to understand how this works. And also, equity of technology. There's some things that we do right now with the app that we think we can add for tech services to update riders and provide Wi-Fi at the depot, which, by the way, we're in the process of including, and then on the buses. All these things can be helpful in updating the riders for something like the services of SAM On Demand. So, in terms of evaluating the services, I would have kind of put together as some of the things that really, really need to be looking at and keeping track of as we go through this. So, fixed route is reliable. SAM On Demand is flexible. Fixed route's going to provide always better ridership, as long as you have the demand there. But SAM On Demand can be more efficient. Fixed route doesn't need the technology. So, in areas where you have clients that don't have the technology needs, that's another mark for fixed route. SAM On Demand has emerging technology, and those are things that we think we can provide in other areas. Fixed route limited data, extensive data with the SAM On Demand, especially with the origin and destination data. One thing that I haven't talked about throughout this entire thing is fixed route, you need paratransit. On Demand, you don't. And that's something we're going to be looking more at as a part of this pilot as we move forward. Now, when I say we don't need it, doesn't necessarily mean that that's not what you do because it might provide the best services for those people. But you could still, paratransit is on-demand. It's just how you do it. And so, that's an important thing there. And then, again, fixed route provides limited frequency, but on-demand, you're getting some no-shows. That can be problematic. So, what's up next for the pilot? What we'd like to be looking at is add some fixed stop locations where the bus would be coming by. Like at the Bus Depot, as I showed you, there's still a lot of rides coming by there. So, people don't have to schedule the rides. The bus would just come by. You literally can put it into a journey on the tablet. The tablet would tell the driver to come by every half hour, every hour. We think that's something that can help provide, potentially, some other areas. Potentially, looking at one or two more Saturday fixed routes. Looking at paratransit with SAM On Demand, some or potentially all of Saturday service. And then, to look at expanding services to the north, in routes eight and/or 19 areas. We think there's some opportunities for that, what we saw on the idle times. And then, moving forward into the winter-spring, is looking at those weekdays, evening service, lower productive routes, paratransit, determine if we can expand, all those things, the same thing on weekdays. And also, one of the things that we found is, we think there's opportunities maybe to, what we'd call right-size vehicles. As you saw, we don't necessarily have a lot of people at the same time on the bus in an on-demand environment. So, could we potentially get by with a smaller bus, which would cost us less, and then help us out with the transit fund? So, with that, I would take any questions you have.
Thank you. Counselor Nitzer?
Thank you, Sam. This is really fascinating. And I think alone, just having data, is probably worth the money. Getting to see this is really great. Was making a bunch of various notes, so I'm just going to kind of jump around. So, the crosstown routes you refer to, so you've added two new fixed routes in response to the data that you saw?
Correct.
The one looked really clear, but did the west one, does that go down Minnesota to 57th and then over, or is it 41st? Can you just align me there?
Yeah. So, what it does is it goes from the depot, and it goes down Minnesota and 41st. And then, it turns up on Louise and goes up to Shirley and comes back on Shirley down to 41st.
Okay. So, it loops up like Louise to Cracker Barrel and then back down Shirley to, okay.
Yep.
And then, it makes its way back? Is that run the same hours as all the other fixed routes now? Is that just two new routes, or have you?
It's an hour later, isn't it? Yeah. So, it starts at about 8:00, 8:30? 8:30. So, it starts a little bit later, but.
Great. You made a reference to something exactly I was going to ask was, one of the challenges in the past when we've talked about, do you always need a larger bus? Is you don't know what the ridership is going to be on the buses. And I've even been told at times when I was over there that they'd have to carry two types of oil filters. And I'm not sure whether that was, you know, a great reason. But anyway. So, I mean, you would be looking into, potentially, you could maybe do a smaller van sort of a thing for just an on-demand fleet versus the large bus for the?
Right. And other places around the country also looking at the same thing. You just have to make sure, the problem is when you're doing it on fixed route, there are times when the ridership is way up. Here, you know, as long as you are monitoring what your ridership's like on on-demand, it's something that potentially can work, especially, you know, if you can share it with a paratransit services or people with disabilities. So, we think there's some opportunities there, at least to continue to explore it.
You made reference to paratransit with SAM On Demand. Today, can somebody do a paratransit ride on Saturday with SAM On Demand, or should they call paratransit?
Pantonium has the capability.
Uh-huh. But are we doing that yet?
No, we're not doing it right now.
Okay.
But the difference is that SAM On Demand, you'll see those yellow dots up there. They're stops. So, we're going stop to stop.
Yes.
And that helps us, you know, especially the bigger buses, you're, you know, you're going on the major streets. Paratransit, of course, is
Door to door.
Door to door, curb to curb. Door to door, curb to curb. And what you would have to make sure is, and Pantonium has that capability, is to one ride would be curb to curb and the next one would be stop to stop, and you can do it that way.
Okay, I have one more, and then I'm going to defer to others before I go to anything else. You've talked about potentially some of the options, some of the future options, which I think are all really great. Do you think in the near future, we could be talking about, as an example, let's take if you have apartments which may be tax credit apartments on T L S Road and some of those areas which aren't served by paratransit that are currently doing some other unique things that maybe you make that and, you know, that that's this is where this could come in perfect because otherwise ridership is going to be pretty low out there.
Right, exactly. You know, the areas that sometimes we've not been able to get to either because of cost or because of low ridership potential, you could get to this area just just because of, you know, what you said, it's 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 on demand. So it's only based upon if there's an actual ride that's scheduled.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I agree that this data is really, really important. We know that the we just couldn't keep going the way it's always been, so we've got to be creative with innovation. Talk to me a little bit about your marketing of this program, where you are getting the word out to increase ridership, maybe other avenues that could be utilized for things like this that might even create more ridership?
Right. So we really focused on existing riders and getting them educated about this. And you're probably right, at some point, we need to move into marketing of new riders. But we wanted to make sure we have a product we can sell there. And and we're still working through some of those issues, like I said, with some of the wait times. We think we're getting much closer. But I think that the continued marketing that's important right now is to talk to, get the message out to those current riders that are using it to say, here's what you need to expect when you're, especially because what we've heard from some is, hey, I'm not getting to work on time. Well, you need to know how to schedule in this environment with this kind of ride. Some of them are expecting that they're going to get a ride and they're thinking it's going to take like 10 minutes, maybe, maybe 15. You know, this is what you need to know. It's still going to take you about 30 minutes to an hour from the time you schedule a ride to get to your location, wait times, ride time, those kind of things. And those those are things that we're still working.
Yeah, and I think I truly think if that can be shortened up like your feedback that you already received, I think that you will see a higher demand for new riders, for people that want that instant such as a Lyft or an Uber, that you see they're there in 10 minutes, you get to your next stop, and so on and so forth. That's going to be where some of your competition is for that, and you're way more affordable. But does it make sense for people to maybe take on and and take the plunge of of the the transit system? So I'm excited to see what you continue to do with this and and certainly agree with that rider time is probably key to keeping people engaged and wanting to continue to try it.
Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. First of all, Sam, would you remind us fixed routes are not running on Saturday, only SAM on Demand?
You know, that's that's the way it started, yes. So it was all SAM on Demand on Saturdays, and then we brought those two fixed routes in on May 1st.
Right.
So that that's the only fixed route that's running on Saturdays right now.
So initially, anyway, we didn't have one competing against the other. So we got a clearer picture of what SAM on Demand was actually, how it was performing.
Correct.
Okay. Going back to the early slide in your presentation, 20 minute average ride time, 11 minute average wait time, 75% trips completed earlier on time. How does that how does that compare with fixed route?
Well, it did varies quite a bit, but what we've found it's fairly similar, you know, generally, you know, with transfers and everything else that fixed route riders have, some could be much longer than that. But because of the reliability factor, sometimes there, you know, we would get a complaint and they would say, this took forever, and you would kind of measure the two and you're like, you know, it's kind of about the same, even though you felt like, but you know, it's just different. And change is hard. I mean, there's no doubt about it. So we recognize that, and we want to continue to, you know, work with those riders, but it's it's comparable.
The issue with no shows on on Demand, is there, does Pantonium have any way around that? Is there a fee, for instance, that if you book, if you book a pickup and you don't show, that you're still going to be assessed that minimum fee? Or is it not enough that it's incentive for them to show up?
So it's, paratransit does that. Actually, you build points, and if at a certain point you get too many points because you've been late or no showed, you actually will will you stop having services for a period of time. So that's kind of the incentive there because no shows are especially huge on paratransit. Here, you know, we've talked about with Pantonium, and they've discouraged us from doing anything major with no shows at this point because you you don't want people to stop scheduling rides. You want them to keep scheduling, and you want to use education as a key. And and some of the no shows could be they, we know early on, some of them were scheduling a ride and then they would move. They would literally move up along the, we heard this from drivers, they would move along the route, and then they would no show, and they were thinking, hey, I was just kind of walking along the route. And it's like, no, there's no routes. I mean, it's, you know, that kind of thing. So there's some education and training that we have to do there, too.
Which is one of the areas which you had indicated still needs some improvement.
Yes.
The advertising as well as the education on how to use the system? You know, there's 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 no doubt that our current transit system is just not And and I want to see on demand rides successful. Now, there's a catch 22 associated with that, too. The more successful it is, the less incentive we have to expand our fixed routes. Without the expansion of fixed routes, I think you know where this is leading. We don't have to expand our territory for paratransit services. So as the city continues to grow out further and further away, there's fewer people that are eligible for those services. Now, I know that we're we're meeting the minimum requirements that we are required to based on federal regulations, but at some point, we do need to address the needs of individuals that need the paratransit services. And, you know, maybe maybe this is the at least part of the answer. But as you as you've mentioned, it's not necessarily door to door services to what they they have now.
If I could make one comment on that, too, I think it's important, is is paratransit riders are used to waiting for a wide ride, their ride window, and it's 30 minutes. So that's the ride window. So this is 20. And the other advantage to this one is you can schedule a ride ASAP.
Versus 24 hours in advance.
24 hours in advance.
Correct.
So there's some things that we think are could be really attractive to paratransit riders to try in this case, so.
Sure. Thank you.
Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things I guess I wanted to start with, are you able to get a good picture? Because this was strictly on a Saturday, and your rider numbers, I would think, would be different on a Saturday versus the weekdays, especially when it comes to getting people to work on time. I mean, I I don't know what percentage of the riders are going to work versus more of a leisure thing on Saturday, but I'm thinking there's still probably a pretty high percentage of people that are still going to work or trying to get to work. So is there enough data to really extrapolate that into giving you an idea of how successful or where the challenges are compared to a weekday if it was moved to a six day part of the process?
You know, probably not. I mean, that's why we want to continue to look and move that forward. We we get a we get a part of the picture. You know, we know how the service works, obviously, and the drivers now know how to to utilize it. But, you know, you're right, there's different kinds of origin, destination, and trip patterns and things that we need to look at for weekdays, and we wouldn't do it the same. I mean, we we kind of blew up the system. I mean, we went out and said, no fixed route, we're just going to come in and do that. It was great for data, but it was hard for change. So weekdays, we probably wouldn't do it like that. I wouldn't suggest it, at least. We'd come in and look at very specific strategic changes that we would make to to some of the routes. But the the good thing about doing that is then, you know, riders are going to have to get used to riding it. They can't move to a different day and stay, you know, on the fixed route. They would they would have to, you know, get used to it. And and we think over time, people will because this is a new technology and people are going to have to.
As part of this, you talked about some anecdotal things of where concerns and things, was there a formal survey or what people, what the riders themselves were actually thinking?
So we we surveyed riders, and we kind of got kind of an interesting cross section of some riders that were 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 riding on the buses or we got it through our app. And and really, they let us know what they thought. A lot of them were really concerned about their their ride times or their ride times and their wait times.
Perceived ride times, too.
Yeah, to to a degree, although especially when we were doing it in March, it was still very new, and there were some things we were still learning. But the intent would be to go back and and certainly do that again here in the next few months.
I I know we're doing on demand, but one of the things that we're spending a lot of time as a community talking about, are we looking to add a route to Foundation Park and some of the large employers as part of that because traffic in and out is going to be difficult and the parking at some of the large facilities that are going to be in that part of town? So do we have any idea? Could we do it? Or is it something that, you know, we have that ability to do at this point? I know that's separate than the on demand talk, but it's definitely something that's at the top of the mind.
It's kind of part of this because, again, how do we expand in those other areas of our, you know, as 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 we're looking at Foundation Park? We don't know if if that would be fixed route in expansion, it's a pretty long distance up there, but certainly, could SAM on Demand do it? Do we need to expand fixed route? Or those are things that would be a part of what we're looking at here, too, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Nitzer?
I think Counselor Starr makes a really great point. I think of that, I think of that new hog, that hog operation facility they're talking about. I mean, e- even if it's talking to them about maybe they, you know, if there's some targeted times or maybe they have a little skin in the game, if they have a lot of employees. So we will have to be thinking about that. In terms of paratransit, ultimately, would your goal be to do something where you would provide the, to Counselor Kylie's concern, would that be a door to door service potentially where the same bus would, for if you if you booked it as paratransit, it would take you door to door?
Yeah, so the the paratransit eligible
Yes, right.
person, you know, would probably make the most sense to do in that door to door. But you could have a paratransit bus with a tablet in it that's run by Pantonium or whatever on demand service we have, and one ride would go door to door, and the next ride could very easily be stop to stop. So you could see where you can potentially look at some efficiencies because there is some idle time on paratransit buses, too.
And I've only spent a very little bit of time where I shadowed a little bit, but I I think obviously the profile and the amount of time maybe to help the, you know, the customer in terms of loading and unloading is a very different. So maybe that could throw off your time, so it would have to be maybe cautiously.
That's all part of what would have to be built in to the the times.
Sure, where it would have to know it's going to take more time.
Loading time, unloading time would all have to be apart. And it is right now. It's just unloading and loading on a fixed route is much faster.
As I've thought about it, it seems like, and I think you're on the right track, which I think it probably ends up in this community being some sort of a hybrid, where you have fixed routes and maybe the core and the more and some of the high traffic areas, and then you have this is, it's not a one or the other. I don't think you'd ever go potentially to all the one or the, you know. So I and I think baby steps, as Counselor Starr referred to, maybe Saturday gives us some good data, but we need more. So that's why you maybe try another day and try another thing. And and so if we have, what, do you need more money for the pilot? Do you have a certain amount of time until it expires?
No, it's budgeted for, and, you know, we are continuing to extend it, you know, at least the end of this year.
Yeah.
And monitor it from there.
Because I mean, I I have to resist the temptation of being patient to just want to jump into this, but I don't think there's anything wrong with continuing to pilot and pilot and pilot if we need to.
Right, I mean, we started really small at a three month because we wanted to see, does it actually work? And it does, but we know we have things to work on, so.
I wasn't surprised, I and I'm glad that you're, and I'm sure you're working, kind of meeting people where they are. I'm not surprised about the lack of technology and how they book rides in terms of having, you know, spent some time watching the task force and kind of the profile of a lot of the riders. So we get, we're just going to have to be nimble in trying to figure out how you do that the most efficiently, knowing that not, you know, many of the riders are just not going to be able to use an app or have a phone to do that. So you have to figure out how you efficiently do phone reservations and things, so. My couple last overarching questions, and this is, again, not right on this pilot, but it's important. We've talked about in recent years, or many years, that paratransit quote unquote being unsustainable terminology like that, but we have also been offloading rides to CCTS every year, more and more and more. Where do you think we are in terms of the sustainability model and the urgency that we need to do something about paratransit? Or is the answer continuing to do the CCTS?
Well, yeah, I think continuing to work with CCTS through the agencies as we have been has been a really good option for efficiencies, best we've been able to find. I think there's certainly other things we need to look at in paratransit, and and this this SAM on Demand option is one we need to explore. I think it could have, it could have some significant efficiencies, so it's a part of the picture.
And finally, the other huge albatross for us, when we've we've showed us charts, is the capital replacement. It's those bus replacements. But we've just gotten apparently some, whether it's CARES or ARPA money or some grants. Does that fundamentally change the trajectory and some of the slopes that you're showing in terms of, you know, how long it's sustainable? Do we have millions of dollars to buy a bunch more buses now? I mean, how, what does that look like?
We'll we'll talk about it more at budget, but I show it right here. This is the updated one. We've we've gotten $10 million over the last two years in COVID relief funds of some sort. It takes us, instead, we were looking at 2022, 2023, going into the red for our transit fund. Now, you can kind of see here about 2028. My eyes don't deceive me.
And that's just essentially pushed it out because we can do some capital replacement with that that money for a while, so it's just kind of pushed it.
Yeah.
But it hasn't changed the fundamental problem necessarily, I suppose, long term.
Yeah.
Unless we fundamentally maybe change and we're buying smaller buses because now we're doing this and
That would change.
Potentially. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions, counselors? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Awesome, as always. Okay, let's move on to next item, Tomar Park Tennis Courts. Linda Healy, the Sioux Falls Tennis Association Executive Director. I'm sure the questions will come from the counselors, we'll volley back and forth on the questions when they come.
Oh, brother. Terrible dad joke, terrible.
That was not an ace. Hello, thanks for your time. My name's Lydia Healy, and I'm with Sioux Falls Tennis. I've been an executive director now for four years, and before that, I was on the board for five. SFTA has been around for, as a tennis club, for over 100 years, and we are a proud partner with the Parks and Rec Department. We've been running their leagues and lessons for over 40 years. You can see on this picture is a beautiful park with 12 courts, and that is our goal. That is Tomar Park, currently just off Minnesota Avenue and I-229. Very private, serene little park that we'd like to invigorate. The last four years, Sioux Falls Tennis Association has tremendous growth. We have more than doubled our league players each We have more than doubled our league players each year. And last year, we had a record of 400 players, which is largest in the Midwest. We have top 10 college players coming up from around the country. And this year's prize money has doubled, so we should get an outstanding turnout. Our mission is to bring tennis to all people, all genders, all communities in South Dakota. Currently, we are lacking in facilities to bring more tennis to high school tournaments. Mitchell has 12 courts and Rapid City has two 12-court facilities. And so we don't meet the standard, so we are, only have the tournament here every third year. We do generate a million and a half dollars of income on our tournaments. So this is our goal, is to bring more usable courts to one facility. We do have a nice board of directors. We generally keep about 12 board members on at each time, so we can hit the cross population of Sioux Falls. And in December, we put a steering committee together of these 10 people. And we made a plan to bring in some volunteers and we used Hyatt Strategic Consulting. And we've started working on raising money. So Tomar Park, you're probably wondering why. There were two courts there. And it was just a really, a space that was available that wasn't being utilized. It's on the bus route. It's in a flood plain, so nobody else could use it for anything. So sports just seems like a no-brainer. You're probably wondering, you know, it cements, it could be flood. Cement is on our roads. We can withstand some of this water and snow. And so we were able to just really expand that area and make it really beautiful and that natural bowl of the shelter belt around the river. And it's quite the hidden gem. With the city being able to provide the land, our goal was to raise $3 million to build these courts and use, have direct access to the disc golf and the soccer fields and the dog park. And so many people would be able to use this park for so many years. And it would be free to the public. It would have no membership and there would be no court fees. We would continue with youth lessons, adult lessons, tournaments. In addition to adding on a brand-new basketball court, a brand-new volleyball court. It could be used for pickleball. There would be kickball and frisbee amenities there. There is a bathroom and a playground and a picnic shelter currently there. But we would be adding a lot of other sun shades, a water filling station, more parking. And this could be like a hub to the bike trails and the dog park. And so we're really trying to create a more family-friendly destination for all these activities and all the amenities that it offers. So as our fundraising goal of 2.9, we are so excited. We worked hard and we're at 1.85 million. So we are here asking for your help to fill the gap.
Questions, counselors? Counselor Nicer?
So not being in this world, where do you play now?
We play McKenon Park, Keene Park, Laurel Oaks, wherever we can piecemeal space. We have so many players that we have to separate.
And is that for tournaments primarily?
That's for tournaments and then we do, for leagues as well. And then for youth lessons, we try and go to Laurel Oaks because we have smaller nets for kids there. And McKenon, because that's a big hub. And then Tomar, we do not have a park south of Interstate 229 for the entire city. So this is the only one, so we could expand really nicely in that area.
What kind of capacity is there at Lincoln High School and is that available?
The Lincoln is a public, or high school courts, so you do have to do a lot of work to get onto those courts.
Okay.
And occasionally, they do let us use them and they've not had bathrooms up till now, which they're putting them in. But they have a lot of other events there that often take precedence over tennis.
I do like a use like this because you're very limited on actual structures, so it's very good in a flood plain. Is any of this location contingent upon area that we're buying, you know, where we're tearing houses down? Or is this an existing parts of the park?
This is a separate area, but now that you bring that up, Phase Two is yours, that where you're buying them homes out. And when you do that, I understand that the bike trail will be moved inside the river also for the interchange. And then you'll have a nice bigger park over there to add to this. But this is separate. This is further down the road from that.
Okay. Well, so what you're proposing right now is on the existing land that we have?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So as part of this, your vision, we would contribute part of the money to get you to your goal? And then you would be doing not only the tennis courts, but all of those other things you talked about?
The basketball court, we'll redo that. We'll add in a volleyball, yep, and water filling stations, benches and sun shades.
Okay. And what, not recalling, I saw the number that was up there of, you know, what you need to get to. Do you have the, what the exact ask is at this point?
I'm just asking you to
The one in the red.
Dig in your heart and come up with one. I do have a match from Great Life Care's foundation. If the city would provide anything of 500,000 or over, they would donate an additional 200,000.
Okay, so you have another 200 if the city will contribute at least five?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciated, you and I had met about this, I know, a month or two or so ago. Couple of questions. So if the city doesn't come up with 500,000, then this 200,000 match is a no-go?
It's a no-go.
Oh, okay. Interesting. How long has the fundraising been going on again?
I began in December on my own. I wanted to get like a couple of good-sized donors to just propel us. But our volunteers weren't put together and trained until late January. So we started in February, March, April, and we announced it publicly on May 4th.
Okay, that's pretty impressive for about five months' worth. Nice work.
Been working hard.
So for tennis, I always kind of have this thought. I mean, I'm a big tennis fan and I play a little bit here and there. And I always like, when you look at the golf side of things and how they do the first tee and they're doing in programs for youth and keeping them busy. And we're always talking about that lately with different programs and things and, you know, keeping kids out of trouble and what do we do? I mean, are there things like that in tennis with like, right now in Sioux Falls with the tennis programming?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
What kind of things with that or how similar is it or?
Sure. We've been like, we've been running the Parks and Recs Department, lessons and leagues for 40 years. We have groups starting at age four to six, seven to eight, nine to 10, 11, 12, and 13 to 18 years old. So we have them Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Yep, at varying parks around the city.
What kind of numbers do you have enrolled in that right now?
Several hundred, yeah.
Oh, great.
Yep.
Terrific. Yeah, I would see, think something like this would really help add to that.
Yep.
What was my other question? Tell me real quick, maybe it's on the subject or not. So like, when you have the South Dakota Open Tournament, are you, and you're bringing obviously commerce to Sioux Falls and I mean, are you paying, is it cash for people that are playing in these tournaments? Are you getting professionals in to play in this apparently?
So far, they're college players or high school players or anyone who wants to play can play. There's NTRP levels and there's open levels. Last year, we had players from 13 states. And we have sponsors that provide the prize money. So this year, a sponsor came forward and they're giving 5,000 to the men's singles winner and 5,000 to the women's singles winner.
Okay, well, that's great. I just always wonder, because I, again, compare you a little bit to golf. Anytime there's golf tournaments, it's like, to keep your amateur status, it's always gift certificates and this type of thing. So people aren't professionals. I wondered how different that was from.
A lot of the kid, the college players can take their travel expenses out and then they have to donate the money.
Okay. Oh, great. My last thing, and it's kind of a brainstorm, maybe I should visit with you off microphone or this or that. But I keep thinking this fundraising thing for you and since we visited, you know, we had like a Jack Nicholas Day Citywide, tied it in with the Sanford thing. I'm a big Jimmy Connors fan and that kind of thing. If you got like a big pro to come in and had some kind of a program where I have no idea, I'm sure it costs money to bring a big name in, but I would think something like that and tying it in with some of our resources could maybe raise a chunk of money or whatever. We can talk about that more, but I mean, are you looking into things like that?
We have looked into it and it is very expensive. We did have Luke Jensen come to Great Life this year and do like tennis lesson. It was $125 per person. So some of that's not really cost-effective for everybody. And we did check into having like some come speak, you know, that starts at $15,000. Plus they want their plane and, you know, so we're checking all avenues, but we
Just yellow M&amp;M's and that kind of thing, like Rockstars?
Yeah, well, I, trust me, I've been on Djokovic's website. I've been on Nadal's website. I'm trolling all these people to see if there's anything they can do to help.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, anyway, it sounds terrific and it's an exciting project, so thanks for all your work on it.
Counselor Breckie?
I just want to ask you a little bit about that long-range vision. And as a backdrop to it, I would say that if, if any of you on the council or anyone in the public has been a soccer mom in the past and understood the benefit of the location of our soccer facilities all around the River Greenway and what that makes for convenience when you attend tournaments. I mean, we are just regionally the best place. At least we were back when I was a soccer mom. I can't imagine that we aren't still. It wasn't by accident. It was by design that we decided to use, that the city decided to use the River Greenway for soccer facilities. Because just as you pointed out with tennis and just as Councilmember Nicer pointed out, it can handle a flood. And, but it's been a tremendous benefit, so I'm extraordinarily excited about the fact that you're looking at locating these bigger facilities also in the River Greenway, the existing one. Can you tell me a little bit more about the long-range vision, you know, of having perhaps a second set in the properties that we're, we're in the process of purchasing? Because I think that same attribute, again, from a traveling around the city, when you don't, when you enter a city, I think of Rapid City with soccer. I mean, they got, for one thing, they got a mountain in the middle of it, you know, so just traveling around, it's just insane to try to get to all these things. Whereas you come to Sioux Falls and you just go up and down the River Greenway. If they, we could create an environment like that for tennis as, you know, as it expands, as the future vision expands, I think it would be a marvelous complement to what we already got going in soccer. And then it just, it just is, I think, a perfect duo to have that stretch out, you know, as it grows along the River Greenway. And has the Parks Department kind of thought about that? And have you thought about that? You talked about there has been some visiting done as far as a second phase.
I have approached the Parks Department about it. At this time, in their drawings, they have more soccer fields. And I don't know if the, if the north side, maybe they'd be willing to give up those soccer fields to move there and we would add 12 more on that side and take that whole area. I'm 100% for it and I will fundraise for it again.
Okay, well, I think, yeah, I think that should be part of the dialogue. I mean, and, you know, and even if there's other places along the River Greenway where we could add more soccer fields, just having along the Greenway is such an easy way with the interstate to locate it, so.
And you can bike there and it's just quick access off the interstate, so I agree.
All righty, thank you.
Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excellent presentation and I agree with Counselor Breckie. Sioux Falls is a youth and adult sports destination for tournaments, whether it's soccer and softball and basketball and all of those things. I got to ask it this way and I'm uncomfortable doing it, but the original deal was 3 million and then the city would donate the land. Now we're trying to change the deal?
Okay.
Just to make sure that I explained it, because that's the obvious thing that kind of pops up. And I know we're blessed with some extra money right now and we're balancing that and that's what we're trying to figure out, but I'm trying to understand that.
The original deal was the 12-court facility. Then a basketball court was added. That was not our deal. Volleyball court was added. That was not our deal, but we agreed to it. And then we had to provide more parking, which we don't need, but soccer needs, so we were, and then we had to add lights for the parking. So that was not my deal with that happening. And I thought if that's what we have to do to get it, then let's just fundraise and do our best.
Makes sense, but, but the number was still 3 million from the beginning?
The number was 2.3 million.
That's where I was trying to get.
And the pandemic increased it 4.6 million.
Okay.
460,000 to 2.76.
Gotcha.
And then with signage and some landscaping, brought the number to 2.9.
Okay, so then that leads to where I'm headed next. Because one of the things that we talk about all the time is that it's a lot more expensive for the city to build things than it is for private groups. But how do we make this work? What's your vision of how this works? That your group would be the contractor and put this up? Or would the Parks Department let bids or how is that part of the process go?
From my understanding, is it's a little more expensive for the city build it than private, so we would probably build it that way. Perhaps you had an idea, maybe the city could contribute the concrete or something like that. And then you'd have, you know, ownership of something.
We can be, we can be creative. That's not the overall, but.
But I think it would, it would be more helpful for us to get the bid. And we have had some in-kind donations of concrete, that sort of thing.
No, it just, it makes the deal, you know, part of this whole process is we have money from a number of different buckets of how we do this and where we get to the number. Can we use capital money? Can we use first penny, second penny? Is it got to be CARESAC money? Does it have to be ARPA money? You know, some of that part of it. And depending on who does the work and how we do it, we can't use capital money, but we could use ARPA money. And again, it makes our staff make it much more complicated and gets further in the weeds than I want to go. We just want to tell the administration where we want this project to end up. So at least asking all the questions of how we get to that point, so, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Counselor Nicer? Excuse me. I always go back to Craig. Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Lydia, talk to me a little bit about Sioux Falls Tennis Association. I know you said you program and, and run our tennis facilities for us, essentially is what you do. What's your compensation for that? Not you personally, but what, what does Sioux Falls Tennis Association get for programming this for us? Because it's a big lift and you've done it for a long time, so what?
There is no compensation from the city. Actually, we pay the city to use the courts. We rent them back from the city. You guys do the upkeep of the courts.
All the maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay. And so that would be the same here too, is once these would be in, the city would be responsible for maintaining them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. And I don't want to speak for Counselor Jensen, but when we had our work session and I don't want to throw a different number out there because I know you're like, the number in red would be fabulous. I know his ask was 500, but I think 500 was that starting point to ensure that we got that match for the 200 for it as well. So I should know this because I have a kid that plays tennis, but he's new to tennis. How many courts is there at Keene and how many courts is there at McKenon?
McKenon and Keene both have eight and they're the only ones in town that are, have lights.
Okay, that makes sense too. So I will tell you from a parent that has a child that we hosted the tennis championships and state tournament here in Sioux Falls. And they do have to play at two different places and one kid was almost late because he had to hightail it across town because he was playing doubles with a seed three kid and, but he was playing over at McKenon or at Keene. And so we get that tournament, but that's exactly why we don't get bigger tournaments. High school kids, eh, big deal. You can drive across town. It's not the end of the world. But you want to get some big tournaments in town, you're out of the market. And we did play in Rapid City, May, I believe it was, and they are awesome. I mean, it is, it is very, very well done. You know, you heard some of the parents and the buzz going around about some of the tournaments that they even get. And a lot of the Sioux Falls kids drive out there for those tournaments because they're big and you get that exposure for it. And so again, for me, this is a no-brainer. This is city land, city property. Yes, you're programming them and maintaining them, but I would wonder what that value number we put on it if you stopped doing it? If we didn't have anybody and we had, how many people would we have to hire to reprogram, facilitate, have the stuff on hand? You're doing stuff that we don't have to hire probably three or four people to do for programming for that. And so I think that's important. One of the things I would like to know a little bit about is we've talked to some other funding mechanism, or not mechanisms, funding other projects. And there's always a component of free and And there's always a component of free and reduced. What do you do for, uh, maybe the, the folks that can't afford tennis lessons? Do you have a grant program? Do you have equipment? Do you, what do you do to bring tennis to people that maybe can't afford it? And tennis is a fairly inexpensive sport to get into for the most part, until you play in high school and college and you need fancy rackets and stuff like that. But to get in as a youth, it's fairly an expensive sport.
It is, yeah. We're probably half of what it costs at Great Life or, or Huether Family Match Point. But if someone calls me up and says they can't afford it, they get to play for free.
Okay.
And we have rackets that we provide them each time they come to lessons. So just bring a water bottle or now we're just gonna have a filling station, so.
Right.
Bring an empty bottle.
That makes sense. And then as far as, one more question, I'm sorry, the parking on this, um, on the Confluence map here, um, I believe you would essentially just widen that. Is that correct? Where you'd have, instead of like, you can pull into the right or left to park, now you're adding essentially two more rows of parking?
Yeah.
Is that what that looks like?
Yeah, and a little bit longer, so it's an additional fifty.
Okay. And as a soccer mom also, I say thank you for that because the parking there stinks. It's really, really difficult to get in and out and generally people park in the neighborhood and walk so they can get out. So, um, thank you for your presentation. I may have a few follow-up questions.
Sure.
And I'll reach out to you.
And just FYI, one of those courts in, in Rapid City are being redone and their bid just, and the courts are already there ripping them out and redoing them is three million dollars. So, yeah, they're in the process of that, using the vision tax to do theirs.
Okay.
Counselor Kelly?
Thank you. Lydia, could you tell me how many twelve court complexes currently exist statewide?
State, just the three. Two in Rapid City and one in Mitchell.
Okay. Um, tell me a little bit about the lights on the, on the facility. Are they all going to be activated, uh, by the players so that they're not on unnecessarily or, and available during what times?
Yeah, they come on, you can set them to come on, um, during certain hours. Like at McKinnon, they come on at eight forty and they go off at ten o'clock.
And it's all the lights or none of the lights?
Well, you could hit half and half.
Okay.
You know, or if people come and it's getting dusky, they can hit it early.
Right.
Come on. Or you can just set it not to come at all, on at all, like spring, might not need it.
And, and I do love the goals that you have listed here. Um, one question that I do have with the activities on a new twelve court complex, uh, I mean, if you're, the more successful you are with introducing all of these activities, the less court time's going to be available and, and it almost works against you achieving your goals. What have you planned beyond that?
Okay.
In terms of having court time available?
Okay, all of our lessons take place during the day and all, all of our leagues take place at night. And then all of the soccer is spring and fall where we're only summer, so we can totally share the facilities.
Uh, for somebody that just wants to go out and play some recreational tennis currently, is there a wait time to, to get on a court?
Uh, sometimes, yes. At McKinnon Park, yeah, we run leagues Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, and I always keep one to two courts open for the public. Yeah. And that's why I have to go to Keene and use additional courts because we cannot fit.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counselor Nightser?
Uh, last couple thoughts as I heard the conversation. The, the first part was, I completely agree with Counselor Erickson in terms of the, the free and reduced component. That's always important. One, one really, I think, interesting distinction though is, um, I recall, and I think maybe former Counselor, uh, Jamison was on the council at the time when there was the discussion and the approval of funding to the tennis complex, the match point, and then the, the ICE complex. Obviously, the distinction there was those were private facilities, where in this case, you're building a park. And so, you know, at any hour, unless, you know, they're being used by people in your tournaments, anybody of any income level can just walk into the park and so there's your public use.
Absolutely.
So, and use the soccer fields or the tennis, so.
Yeah.
So that's, so that's, that's great. Um, I, I just wanted to comment that I was, I, I, I mean, I, I apologize for the ignorance, but I was thinking that you were going to say that you had been fundraising for like two years or something, so that's amazing.
Go big or go home.
Yeah, no, it, that's, it's really amazing to raise that much money that fast. Uh, to, I'm, you know, we, we've got to figure out what bucket would come out of and the bean counters and the attorneys have to figure out how it would work, but, um, to me, that's an amazing return on investment that we could put in whatever, you know, some number and, and get literally three to six times the return on our investment for a public amenity. Now, that being said, and, and, you know, it's, it's fine, but obviously you would build it, you would give it to us, and I assume then going forward, the upkeep and the capital improvements, the replacement over the years, it's all our property, correct? So I mean, we take on that liability.
Correct.
Okay.
And allow us to keep running the programs.
Sure.
And then I have no problem down the road with, you know, we have fundraising, raising events or money that we might have left over to put towards, hey, we need new bleachers or hey, we need, um, a light bulb change, do you?
Yeah.
We're, we provide cards and scorecards and that for McKinnon. I have no problem doing that.
Yeah, and, and I'm not, I, I, I'm not, you know, arguing against it on those grounds. I just, you know, we have to look at the, the, both sides of the balance sheet. Now that being said, you also have the economic impact that you bring in from all of your tournaments, which generates more tax dollars, equality of life and all of that. So, um, I, I think on balance, it's a, a really great deal and a nice, nice vision. So congratulations. Thanks.
Any other questions? I just, I maybe just have two. First off, did your organization run the Huether Tennis Center or is that separate?
That's separate.
How many, uh, tennis courts do they have inside there?
They have six.
They have six? Okay. Is it a prerequisite that a mayor breaks his elbow playing a sport for us to give any money? Or can we just?
I could bring a hammer if you want to bring him out.
I do remember a past mayor breaking his elbow playing tennis, so, and I know he's a big supporter. Thank you, you did a great presentation. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
Our last and most dynamic presentation of the day is Avera, the Twenty-four Seven Urgent Care by Robin Prunty. She's Avera McKinnon Foundation Vice President.
So, thank you. Yes, we have to be, um, exciting because this is the, we're the last ones of your day. So I just want to say thank you. Um, I'm Robin Prunty and I work at the Avera Foundation. I'm the Regional Director for the, um, McKinnon Sioux Falls Region. And, um, we appreciate the opportunity to come to you tonight and talk about mental health. It's a topic that we need to keep, um, in front of us today and also for the future. So I do have a colleague with me, so Thomas Otten. He is the Senior or the Assistant Vice President of the Avera Behavioral Health Services. So what he'll do is he'll talk about the first four slides that we have, and that'll talk about our expansion of our Behavioral Health Center. And we're adding a four-story wing to our current facility. And he'll explain the details on that and also the programming. And then I'll pop back up and talk a little bit about funding and then we'll just open it up to questions. Okay? So Thomas, do you want to?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to go just a tiny bit off script, um, just for the first two minutes, just to talk, why are we even doing an expansion? Uh, because I think it's an important component. Over the course of the last several years, um, we have seen a continuing increase in behavioral health needs in our community. I think I'm, uh, probably preaching to the choir on that, but, uh, and it has been busier and busier. And we've started to see cases where we were full, a hundred percent full. We would have, we have forty child beds, uh, we have sixty-eight adult beds and fourteen uh, beds for our geriatric population. And many days, uh, we would end up full. Uh, and it's a very complex thing to turn patients away when you're full, uh, to say no room in the end when, um, you know, you have a parent bringing in a child who, virtually every child who comes there, uh, has had thoughts, plan or intent of suicide. Uh, I'd say ninety percent plus. Um, and so it's a very complex thing. And so we started to have conversation around, uh, we really need to expand. This is, uh, continuing to be a growing need of our community as the community expands, we need to expand. Uh, and then COVID hit, uh, and it really changed the dynamic of mental health. You've probably heard, uh, the COVID pandemic, kind of the third wave is the mental health tsunami that is now upon us. Uh, it has, starting with last summer, every summer, we would have, uh, a very low census compared to the rest of the year. We have, uh, as I mentioned, a hundred and twenty-two beds. We'd run, uh, close to full a lot of that year, but during the summer, our average of the census is probably in the sixties. Uh, last summer, that was not the case. Uh, had the busiest summer on record by a long, long ways, uh, and that has continued literally since that time. Um, even in child adolescent unit today, we have twenty-six beds in adolescents. We had twenty-six patients in our adolescent program today. So, uh, we really started to say, uh, we need to do something, uh, different. Uh, and I won't go into the, all the statistics of the pandemic, but if you, uh, Google it, you'll find that, uh, suicide is up considerably, uh, depression, anxiety, a whole host of issues, uh, have been created. And, uh, I don't think the answer is right around the corner and I don't think necessarily the answer is building, uh, more beds, but I do think it's a piece of the solution. So we began on this journey, um, and we partnered, uh, with the Helmsley, uh, Foundation Charitable Trust to ask them if they would, uh, join us in that journey. They have, uh, given us, uh, an eight million dollar, uh, start to our campaign and they will pledge, uh, that they would match the next five million dollars. So, uh, important for us to get out and start to do our fundraising. So we serve a five-state region at the Avera Behavioral Health Center. As I mentioned, we have a hundred and twenty-two beds. We had six thousand, uh, discharges last year. It will probably be, uh, real close to seven thousand this year. Uh, as I mentioned, we have been diverting, uh, hundreds of patients due to a shortage of available beds. Uh, also our EDs, uh, in, at the Avera McKinnon ED alone, we have, uh, Avera McKinnon West as well as the main campus ED. We have about twenty-five hundred patients who come for, um, services of behavioral health nature. And the ED is not designed necessarily for a behavioral health patient. Uh, I think both sides of that equation would agree to that. I think the staff would say that's probably the patients they're most least comfortable with. And I think it's, the ED is just not designed, it's, it's a trauma center, it's not designed for behavioral health patients. So our vision of, uh, part of what we're going to do is build a psychiatric urgent care that would be able to off, uh, take most of those, uh, population that is going to the Avera, either of those EDs or the Sanford ED if necessary, and come to this psychiatric urgent care will be a much kinder, gentler, uh, spot for that to occur. Uh, annually, we have about fifteen hundred holds that police would bring in. There's more than that, but some of those holds are placed while they're at Avera Behavioral Health Center. So about fifteen hundred, uh, holds that, uh, the law enforcement would bring in. The new facility, uh, you can see a picture of it there, will have four floors. Uh, it would attach to the facility that we have now, so it will be physically attached. On the ground floor, we have, as I mentioned, that psychiatric urgent care. So this would be twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We will staff with, uh, advanced practice providers, counselors, nurses, behavioral health technicians. Uh, and so we would have access, uh, for anybody to come at any time. We will also have an observation area there or a crisis stabilization unit. So for those people who might not need inpatient care, but need something more than, um, uh, that they can get and see your counselor in a week or even more than our partial hospitalization, uh, a twenty-three hour observation area will be located right inside of that psychiatric urgent care. The other thing on the ground floor will be our partial hospitalization for, uh, a long time. We have had partial hospitalization for adults. We have twenty slots. Uh, they come for twenty hours, uh, a week and we will be expanding that so that we would have thirty slots for adults and for the first time ever, we would have adolescent slots. As I mentioned, uh, this can be a very nice program for people who maybe don't need to, uh, be inpatient, uh, but would be, uh, something more than, than I need to see my counselor in a week. Uh, particularly for adolescents, uh, our vision would be that this would be from one to five, so they could still go to school for much of the day. We looked at this program probably, uh, about, uh, six years ago and at the time, um, Sioux Falls Schools wasn't as excited about us doing that because they were going to miss so much school. Uh, we've talked to Sioux Falls Schools and they're very excited about us doing this. Certainly the patients that would be in this kind of a partial program have, uh, a lot of times very big issues to confront that might be bigger than, uh, what their school issues would be in fact. Uh, next floor up will be expansion of four adult beds. So most of the time, our, our full, uh, capacity is in our child adolescent areas, uh, but these four additional beds will, uh, assist in making sure that we don't, uh, have overflows in the adults. Uh, the other thing that we have with adults is you can overflow adults into the senior program if we need to. Uh, in child adolescent, we don't have that capacity because it's against the state law to overflow kids into an adult area, uh, if you, uh, serve both of those patients populations. So we will have, uh, four beds there and then the rest of it's shell. So really the vision would be, we will figure out what the next need is. This is the last piece of ground on this behavioral health campus, so we will figure out what that next need is, but, uh, for now, we would leave it as shell. The next two floors, we'd bring the senior program back to behavioral health. It is located currently at the Prince of Peace Campus. It was moved off campus when we expanded our adult beds. Um, it, it was originally on the senior, the senior program was on the behavioral health campus, but we had to move it off as the adult population got very, very busy. Uh, and so we moved it into the Prince of Peace Campus, what was, uh, the former Prince of Peace. And we will move it back. It's a fourteen-bed unit now. It will be a twenty-bed unit, uh, as the baby boomers age and the grain of America happens, it's very important to have additional beds for this population. The last floor then is, is where I talked about, kind of one of the greatest needs is, uh, with child adolescent services. So we'll have a fourteen-bed, uh, child unit. Right now, we have, uh, a fourteen-bed child unit and a twenty-six-bed adolescent unit. In the future, we'll have three different units. It'll serve, almost think of it, elementary school, middle school and high school. Um, so we'll have the child, uh, wing here as well as a, a brand-new eight-bed, uh, addiction care center for adolescents. Uh, we do have an addiction center for the adult population that we opened in December of twenty nineteen that has been, uh, revolutionary in the way it has changed many lives in our community. Uh, we need that same service for adolescents and so, uh, we'll have an eight-bed, uh, facility inside this, uh, wing. Um, I think Robin is going to come up and talk a little bit about the next few slides.
So as Thomas and I were discussing, um, you know, the number of holds that we have um, per year, so that's when law enforcement, um, gets involved. So patients who need to be placed on a psychiatric hold, um, due to a mental health condition that could result in danger to themselves or others, um, most of the time it's to themselves. So currently, we, we have fifteen hundred holds per year and right now, those officers are bringing, um, the patients to the ER at the Avera Heart Hospital. So, um, the reason I even asked Thomas about it is when I've taken my parents to the heart hospital, I see the police officers there with patients. And so, um, you know, at least one of the officers stays up to two hours and until a patient can be admitted. Um, sometimes both are needed. It depends on the level of care that the patient has. So, um, our goal for the new psychiatric urgent care facility is to get those police officers in and out in thirty minutes. So we are going to be saving time, um, for the city for those officers to do other things. It's not money back in your budget, I'm sure, but it's, um, at least time that they can be spent, um, doing other things. So that's why our request is two hundred and fifty thousand and we believe you'll receive that as a return of your investment within three years, three to five years, um, for sure. So that's our, our ask today. And I'll just go a little bit more about what our, um, facility project is. It's a twenty-eight million dollar project for the construction. Again, Avera's investment is ten million. Um, thanks to the, um, Harry and Leona Helmsley Charitable Trust, we have the eight million Charitable Trust, we have the 8 million for the construction. And then they challenge the community because they want the community to have a piece of this. Um, these are our family, our friends, our community members. How can we assist them? So, um, they will match up to 5 million. And then we're also, actually, our committee is meeting this week talking about our ongoing program support. So, we build a building that's important, but we know there's additional programming, um, that's going to be needed. And publicly, I can't talk about that today because we're not at the public phase of this campaign, but, um, we'll be, um, opening that up towards August and, um, be talking more about that publicly. So, um, that's just a look at our, um, budget. So, we have a lot of passion behind this. Um, Jennifer Kirby is our co-chair, along with Mike Huether. I didn't invite Mike today because his passion, we'd have been here till, you know, 7:30 tonight. And he probably would have talked about the tennis as well. So, anyway, we have a volunteer cabinet committee, um, as well as our campaign clinical leadership. So, psych, psychiatrists and, um, clinicians are on our committee, um, guiding the way for us. So, some of the things that people are telling us when, um, they make a gift to this campaign, we know it's going to save lives. We're honored to support it. This is the least we can do for children in our community. I'm humbled to honor my mom, my hero, with this gift. People are making gifts in honor of their sons and, in honor of their daughters. So, um, it's time. It's time to do this. And I am proud to, that Avera has taken this on. So, you know, what we do for our vulnerable children, adults, and families defines us. And we hope the city will partner with us on this. And, um, again, Avera thanks the city of Sioux Falls for partnering on so many things, um, that we do here in Sioux Falls. So, open to questions.
Thank you. Counselors' questions? Counselor Kylie?
Thank you very much. And it, it is unfortunate that there is such a need for the services, but there is no doubt, there is, the need exists. I think one of the questions that might, might come up amongst the group or the community is, how does this differ, or how does this work hand in hand with what we are all trying to do with the LINK and the services provided at, at the LINK by, uh, Avera, Sanford, Minnehaha County, and the city of Sioux Falls? How do you see that supplementing our combined efforts there?
Yeah. Really good question. Uh, and, and it does work really hand in hand. I think they're, they're both, uh, very important services. The LINK is going to, is much more focused on the addictions component of that. So, there's the sobering center, uh, that is an important component of that for those patients who just need a place to, uh, sleep it off. There's the withdrawal management for those patients who actually are in a place where they're, have a readiness for change, where they want to get well. And so, they'll stay three, five, seven days, and then we'll get them into a treatment facility. And then we do have a crisis stabilization unit. So, that'd be the one place where there's, uh, some overlap. It really will be, we have three chairs, uh, for the crisis stabilization unit. I think, um, you know, from day one, all of us have felt that, that have been involved with the LINK. It's probably undersized, but it's the building that we have. I mean, it's, it, the city was extremely generous to let us use that facility. Uh, and so, the space that we have allows for, you know, those three services to have those amounts of beds. So, we'll have three chairs there. We would be adding four chairs at the observation center, uh, at the Avera Behavioral Health. So, those two would really be very similar to each other. Uh, they would work very much the same, uh, way. Uh, the other, you know, LINK again is going to be much more focused on the addiction components of this, uh, whereas the Avera Behavioral Health would probably be much more focused on the behavioral health components of that.
And then, lastly, uh, I, I know you were talking about potential time savings for officers involved. Um, are there other areas in which you can see, especially governmental agencies, uh, saving money as a result of having these beds? Because I, I would imagine, just like addiction, behavioral health all often leads to incidents that could lead to incarceration, which the numbers really dramatically increase in terms of costs then. Could you address that a little further?
Yeah. And I just want to add a piece to that. So, right now, when we're diverting children, so, because we don't have a, a patient room for them to go into. So, really what that does when we say we don't have room, we have to look at what their needs are. Um, do the parents look for another facility in another state? Do they mortgage their house to take their child someplace else for care? Or, um, does, is their child so at risk that they end up in the juvenile detention center in Sioux Falls? Which is really the worst place that you'd want a child to go in that situation. So, um, are there additional cost savings? I don't know that we can answer that today, but I think, um, you know, this will be, um, efficient. We won't have as many people going to the emergency room for their care. Um, they'll be going to the right place at the right time. And it's vital.
Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll just piggyback on that really quickly, just to say, yeah, I, I, again, I think, um, it's hard for us to exactly answer that question, but one of the things that would stick out right away is just what we talked about with, um, you know, law enforcement. Uh, it has become more and increasingly more. So, in South Dakota, if you're on a hold, there's two places you can go. You can go to an appropriate regional facility, which in Sioux Falls is only Avera McKinnon, or you can go to jail, uh, which, uh, is a really bad place for behavioral health patients to go. Um, so, um, so we do everything we can to make sure that that doesn't happen. So, patients do end up sometimes staying. If we've got, uh, 40 kids in our, in our child and adolescents areas, uh, kids sometimes do end up staying in the ED for a very long time, uh, you know. Um, we're not yet to the point where it's measured in, uh, length of stay by days, whereas many county, many places across the state, uh, across the country, I'm sorry, are. But we do, we have had stays of 24 hours, or 18 hours, or 12 hours that are becoming increasingly more common. Uh, and so, you know, law enforcement really gets tied up for a very long period of time. Now, we said, you know, usually it's two hours. I think our average length of stay in, in ED is like two hours and 40 minutes. Uh, but sometimes it's becoming much, much longer. So, that's certainly, uh, an important component, I think.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much for the services to the community.
Counselor Neitzler?
Um, I don't talk about this much, but this has been a, this is a passion of mine because I've had, uh, direct family affected by this. And I, I've been at Avera a few times at behavioral health, you know, looking for, do we need to go in? What do we got to do? Um, and so, yeah, people don't have any understanding. And, and something that I've learned, when you walk down the street and you look at somebody, you may have no clue what they are, that their family are going through. Um, there's a lot of mental health issues that are kind of behind the curtain. Um, you mentioned going to the heart hospital. So, when I did a ride-along a, a few years back, you know, we, we went to, and we did have a young lady that I think she was being put on some sort of a mental health hold. And we pulled up to the behavioral health and we went in like a side door. Is that, has things moved for some reason, for remodeling, or?
All, uh, holds in, uh, Lincoln, Minnehaha County typically would go through the heart hospital. Um, if there was a hold, I'm trying to think of what the scenario would be. So, we do have a, a back dock area, uh, that we would, uh, sometimes bring patients in. We bring them in through the dock sometimes to avoid having to come through the front door. When patients come with law enforcement, they're always handcuffed and, uh, often shackled. Uh, so to avoid, we don't want anybody to feel embarrassed walking through the front door in handcuffs. So, we try to bring them in kind of a back door. But typically, that would be, um, either from jail or from, you know, a county outside of Minnehaha County, uh, and Lincoln County. And
Okay. And I don't remember the exact circumstances. I was just curious. So, generally, it's through the heart hospital?
Generally, it's through the heart hospital. Uh, sometimes, sort of law enforcement, if police find somebody who's already got an injury, whether they've taken a significant overdose or significant cutting, they'll take them to the main campus. If there's a, if there's a likelihood that they're going to be, uh, need to go to the main campus for a day or so, uh, some, like a gunshot wound would go to
Sure.
the main campus. Everybody else, if they haven't done anything yet, would start at the heart hospital.
Okay. Besides the fact that the need is always really great, what I really, uh, like about this is that, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out how we can deploy dollars. One of the things with, you know, some of the newer funds is, uh, addressing things directly related to COVID. And obviously, this was exacerbated by COVID. And, and in my humble opinion, also, to some extent, our response to it. But I, I won't, I won't dig into that. But that, obviously, things have gotten, uh, worse for many people. And so, I think this is, you know, is, is, as wonderful as all these other things, you know, the tennis courts and things are, that's great. But this is something that affects a real important need. And so, that's why I think that's really good. Um, and if I could just, you don't have to comment on this, but if I could just get on my soapbox, I, I, I just want everybody to be thinking about the fact that, you know, as, as we're stepping into, in one week, into, uh, marijuana legalization, there is going to be more mental health challenges. That just, it just goes with marijuana. There's going to be more youth that are going to be taking up with it, more illegal use. And with that is, comes a lot of mental health problems, suicidal ideation. And, uh, there are correlations, so it's not just positives. And so, there's going to be more challenges for healthcare and for us. So, I'll leave it there.
Counselor Bricky?
I too have had, um, loved ones who have been challenged with mental health issues. And for some time now, I've thought that the country, um, is behind in its recognition, um, that it treats mental health people as criminals instead of as patients. And I've seen us turn the corner in Sioux Falls faster than a lot of places in the country who are lagging behind way further. I am so thrilled with what we've done with the LINK. I am so thrilled with, what you, the presence you've already had in this community. And this is just another step in that direction that makes us become, I think, one of the first, one of the leaders, let's put it that way, a leader in our community that shows a caring and knowledgeable understanding of the needs of a community and how they treat their mentally challenged. Knowing also that more and more in the mental health field, they're coming to understand that addiction and mental health are hand in glove. That one is symptomatic of the other, and, and trying to treat those co-concurring illnesses as one, and finding out that about 97% of, of all addiction issues have a co-concurring mental health component to them. What you guys already do is amazing. And when I needed your facilities, there was room at the end. I cannot imagine, imagine the terror if there had not been. The fact that you need to do this and get ahead of it and stay ahead of it, I mean, I, I'm, it's, it's what I'm all about. I mean, I think it's just so important. And I do understand the distinction between what the LINK will be doing and what you will be doing, but it's complementary. But it creates a whole, it, you know, I, I wondered with what the LINK, what the next step was for us as a community. Because I thought, that's not enough. If you build it, they will come. Then what are we going to do with them? Because they're going to be there. And we're probably not even out in front of it, even after you do this. But we're probably keeping up with it. And as far as from a, a global standpoint, I think we're leaders. And so, um, I am grateful, uh, that you've come for us with this proposal today. And, and relieved because, um, I don't think that it's going to decrease just because the nature of the world we live in, the environmental or the informational age is extremely stressful, and the political climate is stressful. It's just a difficult time to live. And so, I see that many challenges on the horizon, and I'm glad that you're trying to keep up with them. So, thank you for bringing this forward.
I'll just piggyback on that really quickly. I know I'm not here to talk about the LINK, but I think you're, you're spot on with your comment that we are ahead. Um, just yesterday, uh, I was approached last night, uh, by somebody who said that, uh, they had an employee that was brought to the LINK. And literally, that employee said, "They saved my life." I mean, we're three weeks in, and we're already, um, getting contacted by employers who're saying, "You're saving our employees' lives." So, it's important work, for sure.
Other questions, counselors?
I'll just make one comment. I am extremely, uh, happy that you're here. Your presentation was very good. And I think you can look for support from the council going forward to all your endeavors down there. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
At this point, we go move into public comment. Seeing none, I'll call this meeting